Before we start, please silence your cellphones. We have amplifying equipment available for those who are having trouble hearing. That's available by the Township Secretary up there to my left. The room is also equipped with telecoil technology. You have hearing devices that are equipped with that as well. And later in the meeting, when the floor is available for public comment, we do take public comment from those in the room first. Then we turn to those who are joining us virtually for public comment. If you make comments, we ask that you introduce yourself at the beginning of your comments. So with that, let's call to order with the May 15th, 2024 meeting. The Board of Commissioners and Lower Merion, please come to order. And I'd ask that all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance of the Five.
My pledge of allegiance to the five United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Gavron and Mr. Stevenson have asked to be excused. Mr. Bernheim.
Present.
Mr. Churchill.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Ms. Epstein.
Present.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Here.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Here.
Dr. Rossman.
Here.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Woodruff.
Here.
Mr. Zella.
Here.
Mr. Sinai.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a form.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So every once in a while, we have the opportunity to recognize people for their service to the township. We have several of those tonight. We're going to start with someone who's had many years of dedicated service to the township. I'm going to ask Ken Brier to join me in the oval. Thank you. And also Charlie Davidson, Drew Freed, Lou Rossman, Commissioner Bernheim, Commissioner Zelloff, if you could all join us up here. So as they are making their way down, as you may be aware, Lower Merion Township was incorporated in 1713. And you would be forgiven if you thought that Ken Brier had been serving on township board since that point. This is a man who's had unbelievable service to the township. He served nearly 10 years on the Planning Commission, including as its co-chair, 17 years on the zoning hearing board, including eight years as its chair and one as co-chair. In total, that's 27 years of service. To put that in context, we actually have one person, Phil Franks, who has been doing this for 30 years, so you're second. Third is someone who's been in service to the township for just 22 years. It's a tremendous amount of service. And if you know Ken, you know that he has done this all with tremendous care and absolute devotion. It is people like Ken that make this township work, and we are incredibly grateful for your service. Thank you very much. We have several people here who also wish to say a few words. I was going to say express their gratitude, but I'm not quite sure what they're going to say. So we will start with Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Board of Commissioners, my name is Charlie Davidson. I had the pleasure of serving with Ken for 18 years on the Planning Commission and zoning hearing board. We are dear friends and really welcome this opportunity to say a few words. We gather tonight to honor a remarkable individual, the former chair of our Township zoning hearing board. His dedication to public service was evident in every meeting he presided over where he skillfully managed, navigated complex discussions, always managing to distill the essential elements of each application. His approach not only respected the process and all involved, but also kept our hearings focused and efficient, ensuring that every voice was heard and every detail considered. But beyond his professional acumen, it was his ultra-dry sense of humor that brought a sense of lightness to our proceedings. He had a unique ability to deliver a wry comment at just the right moment, easing tensions and reminding us all of the joy that could be found in our work together. Today, we honor his contribution, grateful for both his leadership and his love for Lower Merion Township, or in his words, "the vest of all possible townships." Thank you.
Next, I will hand this to former Commissioner Bruce Reed.
I will be brief because Ken taught me brevity. I got to know Ken when he returned from serving in Desert Storm in the earliest part of this century, early part of the century, I should say. And we served together on the Neighborhood Board in Ballack Kinwood. We served together on the Planning Commission. And indeed, as we will hear, and as Charlie has said, Ken's service to Lower Merion has been remarkable. I would also like to point out that Ken's service to his country, both with regard to Desert Storm and also as a Colonel of the United States Army, particularly in the civil affairs portion, was significant with regard to the United States and Bosnia, significant with regard to Desert Storm. So he is a man who has dedicated himself to public service, and we are all on his debt.
I'll take a little break from Sirius. I had a patient several years ago. I noticed that he was wearing cufflinks with the seal of the Vice President of the United States. So I knew when he talked, I would want to listen. This was a man who was a father, and he started bragging about his son. What else? He produced a letter from his coat pocket. It announced that his son, Ken Brier, received the Bronze Star for his service as a commander in Desert Storm. I thought, wow, was I impressed. It was the first time I had heard the name Ken Brier. So I thought, he lives in Ballack Kinwood. I wanted to meet him, introduce myself, and spend some time with him. But alas, I found out that Ken Brier had a crush on my wife, and he chased her around. My jealousy was quenched when I found out that Ken and Val were six years old and living in Marion Park at the time. So when I met him, I assured him that my wife Val had changed quite a bit. That's funny. From that time forward, when I first met Ken, he's been a great friend. He is perhaps the most interesting person in the world. He might even want to sell Dos Equis. Stay thirsty, my friends. Ken was a lieutenant colonel and a battalion commander for several hundred people beneath him during Desert Storm. He spent 30 years and 30 days in the United States Army. He is part of the official history of Desert Storm, and under his leadership, he developed a refugee camp for displaced Shia in San Juan, Iraq. His letters of commendation come from tribal chiefs throughout Iraq. Ken is a neighbor, and no one loves Ballack Kinwood more than this man. His wife, Leslie, and Ken have three children that were raised in the township. He is true to his word. He is ethical, analytical, a no-nonsense guy, a no-nonsense attitude, and he has a natural ability to lead. Lower Merion Township was fortunate to have Ken Brier as a chair of the zoning board and planning board for 27 years. Ken loves public service, and for that, we thank you, Ken, and applaud you this evening.
I know Dan wants me to speak before he does. Comedy, this wishes. As always, we welcome former commissioners with us this evening. Former Commissioner Marion Phillips and Phil Rosenzweig and Jim Ellison, and many of you here to recognize Ken, and many of you here for other reasons as well. Ken, you've had a remarkable, remarkable service to Lower Merion Township. You were on the Planning Commission during some big land development issues, the Ardmore revitalization plan, and you held those hearings not here, but in the Haverford School auditorium. And those meetings lasted a long time, and you gave every speaker their time. And I believe it was unlimited time. And Main Line Health, the two hospitals, Lincoln Hall and Bryn Mawr, and their very big land development plans, the two high schools, Howard and Lower Merion, and their very big land development plans. And then, like Charlie Davidson and Rob Fox, I believe, you then went to the zoning hearing board. And at the time, you said, "Well, I'm now joining the House of Lords and leaving the House of Commons." And I thought that was such a great comment. And everybody should know that Ken, on the zoning hearing board, is not an attorney. And so I think that's important to point out. It was Ken Brier who said before anybody, at least to my knowledge, he said, "You know, this old and disconnected zoning code in Lower Merion Township needs to be completely rewritten." Ken was ahead of his time, because we have done that. We went through the comprehensive plan and went through, with some outside help, completely rewriting the zoning code, and it's a significant accomplishment. So Ken, thank you for your 27 years of service to Lower Merion Township. I don't know if former Commissioner Joe Manca was here, but you may have beaten his service in terms of service to Lower Merion. So thank you.
See, Ken, I asked to go last because I've learned that Commissioner Zelloff does his homework so well, and I can pretend to say, oh, he stole everything that I was going to say, as if that were true. But I did, I would feel remiss if I didn't make a couple comments here for several reasons. One, during the time that I had to serve as president of the board, our secretary had a pre-printed form for your approval of being, you know, reappointed to the board, because it happened with frequency and it happened without hesitation. And I say that somewhat kiddingly, but the truth of the matter is it happened because of the work that you did and the respect that you had from the other members who served with you on the zoning board and those who appeared before you. And there is something that's within you that's been mentioned here that is always so self-evident for anybody that meets you, and that is that element of public service, which is just a natural part of your DNA. And I would also feel remiss if I didn't note something. During the time that I served as president of the board, I had what I referred to as my breakfast club. There were three individuals that I would meet with somewhat regularly and tap into their expertise, and they stand here, and Ken, Charlie, and Bruce. I did not have to pick up the tab, but nevertheless, I had the benefit of each of them and some of their good humor and some of their not-so-good humor. But nevertheless, Ken, it is an honor to stand here tonight just to thank you for all that you've done, and I know better. You're not going away. So, Ken, thank you very much.
Ken, it's your turn. The microphone's yours.
Well, Commissioner Rossman, you didn't have to bring the police. I'll leave Val alone. We were neighbors, Val and I. She was so cute, and she still is in Married Lou's tragedy. How could it not be good when I got to work with people like Bruce and Charlie, you know, and Alan and the township? It's the best of all possible townships, and that's what I would say. Not every week, because I don't want to be redundant, but we're full of talent here, and then the people that want to be in public service rise and aren't selfish and are giving and do things on the square and don't ask for bribes. I won't name the commissioner who's in the audience right now, and he came up to me when he first got here, and he said, "So what's the game? How do you get paid off? Because I, how do you do it?" I said, "You don't do it. It doesn't happen. No one will ever ask you to be corrupt, and you will never be corrupt." And in that way, this township is great. The staff in this township, which is about 400, is enormously dedicated and talented, and that's hard to do, is to get 400 people to row in the same direction. But the commissioners do do that. And over the 27 years, we've always had a crop of new and talented people coming forward. Things do change, but many things, the basics, stay the same. The good people rise, the good people serve, the good people sit here too long and listen to each other speak on every damn subject. But the zoning board doesn't do that. We end at 10:15. We're not televised, and that makes life bearable. And speaking about the zoning board, right now, there's some great members on it that have been selected by the Board of Commissioners, and you just assured the future again with the selection of people. And Amanda and Alan, it's just a great board. And that it's not televised is a big help. I want to thank you for the chance to serve, because I think Charlie and I are fans of Marcus Aurelius, the Roman emperor, and he wrote a book, and we try to follow it, which means that when you are favored in life, then you should give back through public service. If you've made some money, if you've had some luck, you're supposed to give back, and if you don't, then you have not had a full life. But this kind of service that we have done and you do is the kind of service that leads to fulfillment, and it's bigger than you are. And the township's bigger than we all are. And it's just a marvelous privilege, and I admire everybody who wants to serve, and the long-termers like Scott and Bruce, who rose to be the president. I'm staying in Ballack Kinwood because Val Rossman is a couple blocks away. And I thank you all. And any chance to serve, Ernie, I'm your man. And if you don't give me one, I'm thinking about becoming a volunteer fireman, because then I get to wear a uniform and get another pension. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. So we have a little token of our appreciation from Commissioner Zelloff.
Congratulations, Ken.
For the next recognitions, I'm going to ask Captain Gene Patranek to come on.
Do I need a mic or anything?
Yes, I think you do.
So I have here with me tonight Officer Joe Kraus and Officer Ryan Genschick. And I just want to start with them briefly, because they are the two officers that responded to this crash on this day. And fortunately for them and for everybody involved, the danger, the tragedy, had already been averted. So Joe Kraus, who's also our officer of the quarter, he recognized that something special happened on that day. And with the information he had, he took it to his sergeant, and his sergeant wrote up the details that Joe had given him and passed it up to chain, excuse me, passed it up to chain of command. And that's why we're here tonight. And Nash Benedict, Lionel Lutzker, two residents of Marion, could you please come up? Just stand here so your family could see you and stand next to the two officers that responded. And I'm going to read a summary of the commendation. So, this will help. Bring the font pretty big, but not that big. On a Sunday afternoon in February, Marion residents Nash Benedict and Lionel Lutzker heard a loud crash at the intersection of Sycamore Avenue and Marion Road. Rushing outside, they saw that one of the cars had crashed into a tree and the engine was on fire. Both men quickly recognized that the occupants were in danger. Benedict ran inside his home to get a fire extinguisher. When he returned to the car, there were now flames inside. The driver relayed that her six-month-old daughter and a beloved friend were still buckled in the backseat. Without concern for their safety, the men jumped into action. Benedict climbed into the trunk area and used the extinguisher to keep the fire at bay. Lutzker then entered the back door of the car and took the extinguisher from Benedict. Both men were able to fend off the flames and smoke and quickly free the infant and the frightened passenger. Nash Benedict and Lionel Lutzker, in a courageous, life-defining moment, acted as a team to save the lives of two strangers. Lower Merion Township is a better place to live, work, and raise a family because of residents like Nash and Lionel. For their actions, the Lower Merion Township Police Department would like to recognize and sincerely thank them with this citizen's commendation.
Great work. Great work.
The next part of tonight's agenda is not nearly so happy. It is with great sadness, we recognize the recent passing of Linda Jackson. Linda first started working for Lower Merion Township in 1978. She had been a longtime employee of Parks and Recreation Department, first as a playground supervisor, then as a recreational leader, a community center coordinator, and finally the Ardmore Avenue Community Center leader, a position that she held for 23 years. She was also the executive director of the Ardmore Avenue Community Center Board of Trustees and a member of the Lower Merion Police and Minority Relations Committee. Linda was deeply dedicated to this township and integral to the fabric of her community. I would like to invite former Commissioner Marion Phillips to say a few words about Linda. Thank you, Marion.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate this opportunity to share a few reflections about Linda with you this evening. Commissioner Stevenson and I talked. He's deeply regretful that he could not be here tonight, but we blended our recollections into this one presentation. Linda's dedication to our community was unparalleled. You heard, 45 years is a testament. As an alumna of Lower Merion High School and Chaney University, she began her career in 1978 with the township as a seasonal playground supervisor, which is fitting, because ours is one of the most busy playgrounds in the township during the summertime. And she ultimately did become the Ardmore Avenue Community Center Executive Director, which was a position she held until she passed. As director of the Ardmore Avenue Community Center, she organized an immeasurable number of programs and events, including our annual Unity Day celebration. If you haven't had a chance to come, we hope you can visit us next summer, because she's made that a tradition. She was a tireless advocate for the history and preservation of African-American community in Ardmore, ensuring that the adjacent park was actually renamed for Vernon V. Young, who was a mentor and was so, so important to the Black youth of her generation. She was a fierce promoter of HBCUs, which is historically Black colleges and universities, and she constantly presented them to our youth as important educational opportunities and experiences. But Linda was not an early riser. If you knew Linda, she didn't like getting up early in the morning. I once asked her for a meeting at nine o'clock, and her response was, "In the morning?" Linda was not at her best at first thing in the morning, but a two o'clock to 10 o'clock schedule, that was right up her alley, and that's exactly the hour she worked at the community center. Even though she was not a morning person, she made sure that the kids in our neighborhood had access to early morning summer camp, from nine to three every day during June, July, and August. What other camps charge on a weekly basis, our camp charges for the entire summer. And she made that a number-one goal, to make that camp affordable for the kids who had nothing else to do during the summer. And for those kids who grew too old to attend the camp, she hired them on as counselors and junior counselors. So she created employment for the older kids in our community. Our basketball league is always oversubscribed, thanks to her efforts, and it's one of the reasons why our park is so busy during the summer. As a member of the Police and Minority Relations Committee, she supported the Fledgeline Community Cares Program, which is held as an after-school program at the center, and we hope to collaborate with the police in the future to get them involved with mentoring our youth. Linda was a cornerstone in our community. She was instrumental in the planning of the new Ardmore Avenue Community Center, and it is safe to say that, aside from family, the center truly was the centerpiece of her life. And if you aren't sure about that, you need it only to look at the license plate on her car, which said Shaq I, going back to the days when the Ardmore Avenue Community Center truly was an old shack of a building. Her tireless advocacy for the shack leaves a lasting impact, and the best way I can describe Linda is to say she was a tough-love den mother. She loved her kids in that building, and the kids loved her back, but she broke no nonsense and no bad behavior, and you never had to wonder what she was thinking. She will be sorely, sorely missed by her mother, father, brothers, her son Jai, and the rest of her Ardmore family that she's acquired over the years of her many, many years of service. Her funeral will be held on Friday, May 24th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Mount Calvary Baptist Church, for those who wish to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. It is always painful when someone leaves us too soon, but we feel it especially deeply when, like Linda, they are an active member of our Lower Merion Township staff. I ask that you please rise and join me in a moment of silence. We have some minutes to approve, so I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on April 3rd, 2024, and stated meetings of the Board of Commissioners held on March 20th, 2024, and April 17th, 2024, as distributed. One second. Thank you, Vice President Kramer. All those in favor? Opposed? With sentience? Hey, do I have that? A few announcements. The Board met in executive session earlier this evening regarding the following matters: award redistricting, some personnel matters, and litigation related to billboards, the firearms ordinance, a sewer easement, and a business tax case. And we also discussed a Norfolk Southern land lease. The annual Go for the Greens Award Ceremony will be held on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. at Appleford. All township libraries will be closed on Wednesday, May 22nd, 2024, for an in-service day. And then Monday, May 27th, 2024 Memorial Day is a legal holiday. You did not need me to tell you that. The Township Administration Building Libraries will be closed for business, and there will be no refuse to recycling collection. But in anything with a plug, recycling event will be held on Saturday, June 1st, 2024, from 9:00 until noon at the K. O. Public Works Complex in Penn Valley. from 9 until noon at the K O Public Works Complex in Penn Valley. So we now turn to the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any non-agenda items or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. If you have comments on any of the agenda items, there'll be a separate time for that later. If you wish to address the Board on anything that's not on our agenda, we're going to ask that you come to this podium. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And if there are a group of people who are speaking on the same subject, and you have appointed a representative to speak for you collectively, we will happily give you five minutes instead of everyone having to come up one after another. It is the practice of this Board that after comments, we take them from people in the room, and then we take them from people attending by Zoom, and at the end, we respond. And so we just don't respond individually along the way. So does anyone in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege? Ask you to come to this podium and just start by introducing yourself. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, President Stein. I am fellow Commissioners. My name is Tracy D'Amici. I live on Ashland Avenue in Belmont Hills, and I am the Vice President of the Belmont Hills Civic Association. On March 4th, at our monthly meeting, the LM Skate Group presented their plans to build a, quote, "flagship skate park" in the Lois J. Smith Park area of the township. This was the first time that the community has heard of such plans. The Civic organized a community meeting on March 18th that we held at the Belmont Hills Fire Company, which included citizens of the Penn Valley resident area who live around the proposed skate park. This meeting was well-attended and raised many questions and concerns. At our April meeting, we continued the discussion, and the community concluded that while the skate park is a good idea, Lewis J. Smith Park is not the appropriate location. Residents raised concerns about parking, noise, lighting, safety, and loss of green space, as this is the only open space not designated to an activity currently. There were concerns raised about the survey conducted by the LM Skate Group, the building and maintenance costs, along with third-party control of the township amenity. Other locations have been suggested, such as the Coriolot and the property that the township purchased in 2011 from the Spaventa family, which was expected to be converted to parkland or a ball field. The Civic hopes that the Board of Commissioners will join us in supporting the residents who will be directly impacted by the skate park and remove Lewis J. Smith Park from this list of locations. Thank you.
Thank you. So does anyone else wish to take advantage of public privilege?
Hi. My name is Dean Carvalho. Thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. I'd also like to thank all the residents who have come out in support of the skate park opposition.
Mr. Carvalho, we just ask that you tell us sort of generally where in the township you live.
Yeah, sorry. I apologize. I live on Mary Watersford Road, right across the street from the pool. I'd like to bring up that we spent a lot of time going around collecting physical signatures against the construction of the skate park at Lewis J. Smith. And I, we collected 139 signatures from Belmont Hills residents, and we also collected 33 signatures from Smith Drive and Harvest Circle residents who are mostly impacted by the construction of the skate park, for a total of 172 signatures. So I'd just like to add on to what Mrs. D'Amici said previously about just asking you guys and with your support against the skate park. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I mean to ask that people will not applaud. I think we appreciate where you're coming from, but the practice of this Board, if you can come and speak, but, you know, in fairness to, it becomes intimidating if anyone has a different point of view if we do that, so we try not to do that. Anyone else wish to come up?
Good evening. I will be very brief. This is not the same topic that the two prior speakers have spoken about, so I want to respect the five-minute limit that you've requested. We live contiguous to the proposed location of the skate park at Lewis J. Smith Park. We are on one side of it, and I don't know if the other neighbor who's on the other side of it is here tonight, but we will be most effective.
Sir, if you could state your name for the record.
Oh, Joseph Canuso. I apologize.
No worries.
And we will be most effective. The property that we live in was purchased in foreclosure from this township in 2011. It's a historical property with a historical easement on it, and our family put up to $1 million into improving it under the close supervision of your historical group here, led, I believe, by Greg Pritchard. And for us to now be faced with the prospect of all of the concerns that the first woman stated, and the prospective significant devaluation of our property, is a very daunting prospect. So we are asking for some consideration of that specific effect on not only our family, but on our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, I mean to have to ask that we just not applaud after you speak. Anyone else wish to take advantage of public privilege?
Good to see you again, Commissioners. My name is Alex Bluck. I'm a Ballackinwood resident and board member for LM Skate, which is a nonprofit advocacy group. I live in the College Park neighborhood in Ballackinwood, less than half a mile from Smith Park. I cast my votes at the Belmont Hills Library. My family is often a member of the Belmont Hills Pool, and my children have attended the Township Playground Camp that's hosted there. I grew up as a skater in Lower Marion, and I currently work as the head of risk operations for a relatively influential tech company. I am a product of this community. I have a profound sense of gratitude for the commitment to the community and for your decision to fund the much-needed skate park project. Your dedication to the well-being and enrichment of our youth is truly commendable. As we move forward with the process of selecting an ideal location for the skate park, I urge you to consider the merits of including Belmont Hills in the list of potential sites. While I understand the concerns raised by the Belmont Hills Civic Association and community members, I firmly believe that we should explore all viable options before making a final decision. Belmont Hills holds immense potential to become the home of a vibrant and inclusive skate park. Its central location, accessibility, and existing amenities, such as the hockey rink that we hope to see improved as well, make it a prime candidate for such a project. I acknowledge the desire of the Civic Association to explore alternative locations, and I believe that their input is extremely valuable in this process. I also urge you to prioritize inclusivity, accessibility, and community engagement in your deliberations. Let's ensure that every voice is heard and that every perspective is considered as we work towards creating a space that will bring joy, vitality, and unity to our township. We're really excited about the opportunity to create something truly special, a place where our youth can thrive, our community can come together, and our township can flourish. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to take, please, please, no, no. I'm not above having a recess and sending people outside because of the way we're going to do things here. Anyone else wish to take advantage of public privilege? Okay. Thank you. Do you have anyone online?
I do have Adrian Seltzer. I'm going to promote her to a panelist.
I'm here. I'm here. Hi, everyone. Adrian Seltzer of Wynwood. I learned that I can't do this on my phone, so I'm at my computer. I would like to bring to the attention of the Commissioners that whoever, whomever is scheduling the street cleaning needs to pay attention to when the trash schedule is and also when the trees let all the pollen and everything out, because they came down my street and in our neighborhood the same day as trash collection, so they were weaving in and out of trash cans, because most of the trash cans go in the street. And then two weeks later, all the trees let all their pollen and everything down, and it looks like nothing happened. It was a complete waste of taxpayer money. And I really hope that you will consider the schedule for this next year or in the fall. Please don't do it on a trash day when we have to, everybody moves their cars, but the trash cans were still out on the street. So I hope you will do that. I, I'm not sure whether this is for now or the other, but this is about the bike race, and I'm sure a few of you will remember.
So the bike race is, approval for the bike race is on the agenda, so that'd be public comment next.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Seltzer. Do you have anyone else in line?
No one else.
Okay. So if we had someone else in the room who missed an opportunity, come on up.
Hello, Commissioner, board members. My name is Dan Neil Libby. I live 101 Harvest Circle, Ballackinwood, which is the closest house to the proposed skateboard park. If the skateboard park was there, it would bring a lot of noise seven days a week. There'll be obvious injuries and some ambulances coming down the street. The noise will be extremely loud, and it just wouldn't be a great location. It would be a terrible location for the skateboard park. The skateboard park, I think, is a good idea, but the location is just a terrible location. I have two young kids, my wife, they love sports, but we really don't want the noise there seven days a week. The swimming pool's fantastic. The parking, unfortunately, fills up our entire circle, so when we back our car up, we can't even get out of the house anymore in the summer. We have to go over our grass. We accept that. The hockey rink is there. We learned to live with it. It's noisy up to 10 o'clock every day. You know, you hear the banging of the pucks. But the good news about the hockey rink is it's only six-on-six. When you get a skateboarding park, it could be unlimited. It could be 50 kids, 100, 200. So I think the noise would be extremely loud. And the property right there, that's historical property. That was the old Smith Farm Township, whatever. Charlie, the last slave, used to live there. He used to do all the lawn, the chickens, the barn, the hallways. They planted trees as the buffer from the hockey rink. That was part of the deal years ago. So they got the big trees. A lot of the trees fell, unfortunately, but the trees act as a sound barrier, so the hockey rink isn't that loud. As the trees have fallen down over the years, the noise is getting a little louder from the hockey rink, but it's acceptable. The skateboarding park would be 15 feet from my grass. It's too close. And that area right there, people walk their dogs. People, that's an access area. So it's just a bad location. But I'm all in favor of a skateboarding park, just not in that location. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. So I think that's who we have for public privilege. Does any Commissioner wish to respond? Commissioner Woodruff?
I'll obviously respond to the concerns with the skate park in Ward 3. So I do want to thank the Civic and all the residents of Belmont Hills and Lower Marion Skate for coming out, also the residents from the adjacent Smith Drive and Harvest Circle. So just reiterating previous emails I have sent to the Board, the intent behind the advocacy work and kind of serving as a conduit with the Civic Association was really to kind of have that discussion, because there was interest in general from an advocacy group to include this site in a potential analysis, right? So I think it's important to stress that what we're responding to tonight is just advocacy work from a third-party group and not work being done by township staff. So, you know, we'll obviously cross that bridge when we come to it, but over the course of the, you know, last few months, it's really been a task of responding and explaining, whether it's at the Civic meetings or at a community meeting, explaining process and really kind of tackling some concerns, misinformation, and some misleading graphics from the presentation that was presented. And so, you know, I have passed along extensive notes to Parks and Rec, to Commissioners, to other staff members, also passing along the recommendation for three other sites in Ward 3. That all being said, just to, you know, for the sake of transparency and to echo kind of what I have had discussions with other Commissioners, skate park, absolutely, it was my outlet as a child. It was like my way of retaining a social life through a difficult household upbringing. And so, you know, I think the idea of a skate park in Lower Marion Township is, it's a must, right? So it's going to benefit a large amount of the community. And, you know, I even cite the CIP with the next concern, where in doing so and investing that much money for such an amenity, you know, I would hate to see that amenity shrink in size just because it's trying to go to one site or another. And so with that, right, the numbers in the CIP, I'll just cite 13,000 to 15,000 square feet for a skate park. I think when all is said and done, and if this site were to be analyzed, I'm confident, and just putting my daytime job hat right now, I'm confident that, like, you likely will not get that type of square footage at this site. Impacts, natural environment, noise are all valid concerns. I do think some of those are more design decisions, but I just don't think this is going to yield the potential square footage that we want. And, you know, for the incredible work by Lower Marion Skate and their skateboard clinics, like, for the younger generations who look forward to their clinics and look forward to skateboarding and those opportunities as they grow up, we really want to make sure we pick a location that, you know, gives Lower Marion the skate park that they deserve, you know, the largest possible, in my opinion, and the most inclusive. And so, you know, wherever that route takes us, you know, I will be in support of a skate park. But going back to my initial point, is that there hasn't been nothing shortlisted or proposed by the township staff. And so what I ask at this point is that we kind of wait for that process, we wait for that response, and then we work with township staff to make that happen. Because I'm confident that, you know, with the high bar that we set here in Lower Marion Township, we are going to get a really nice skate park in the end, where, I'm not sure. But nevertheless, I trust that staff is in the best interest of the residents. So I ask that we just have a little bit of patience and really let them kind of spearhead this effort.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Woodruff. Does anyone else wish to respond to public privilege? Saying none. We will move to public comment. So this is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items. The same rules apply. Three minutes. We ask that you introduce yourself. If you have comments regarding the 2024 sanitary sewer rental rate ordinance, we have a public hearing on that. We'll take comment on that later in the evening. But for anything else that's on the agenda, this is your opportunity to comment now, and we ask that you approach this podium if you wish to take advantage of public comment. Okay? Seeing no one, okay.
We know how to clear a room.
Jeff Rotsky, Ardmore.
Okay, so, sir, why don't you just wait a second? There'll be noise as people leave, and we want to hear what you have to say. A little more. Okay, sir, please, go ahead.
Jeff Rotsky, Ardmore. Excuse me. I just want to speak in support of the bike race. I understand there's going to be a vote on that, and I think it's a great, great event.
Sir, if you could just speak a little louder, or you pick up the microphone, the microphone will come out on the podium, and then you can.
I just want to speak in support of the bike race. I think it's a great event, and I really look forward to it. Thank you.
We made you wait all that time. Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public comment? Jody, anyone online?
Yes, Adrian Seltzer has her hand raised. I'll put her into as panelist.
Hello again. Adrian Seltzer, Wynwood. I want to first thank the Commissioners for all their hard I want to first thank the Commissioners for all their hard work that they do all week, every week. It's really commendable, the service that you give to the township. And in efforts to save you some hassle, the bike race this year is scheduled for Sunday. I don't know which of you were around, was two or three years ago, three, maybe three or four years ago, when it was on a Sunday and it created a lot of havoc in the Ardmore neighborhoods with people not being able to get to church on Sunday morning. And I want to try and save you the aggravation because this is now scheduled back on a Sunday. This was brought to my attention in an NAACP meeting, and since I usually go to the meetings, I volunteer to say something. I have nothing against open containers. I have nothing against the bike race. Our membership committee comes, is out there at a table for the last two years, and we're planning on coming this year, but when we heard it was a Sunday, that can be a problem for the neighborhood. So I would really, really like you to look into that before okaying it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Jody, anyone else online?
No.
Okay. So, so thank you, Ms. Seltzer, for the comment. So I'm going to briefly respond.
I was just, I was just refreshing my memory with the Township manager, and I think I remember this correctly, because I remember vividly when the bike race was an issue and people could not get in and out of their houses. And, and I believe the route has been changed since then. Right back then, that was in the early years of the bike race, it used to go through the neighborhoods off of Lancaster Avenue. Now the bike route, the race route is just Lancaster Avenue through Suburban Square, right? So it avoids the neighborhoods, and I think it no longer blocks access, but I've talked to Township manager, will certainly look into it and make sure that, you know, there's ingress and egress. I think, I think the route was changed in part because those issues had arisen before.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to respond to public comment? Saying none. So we are going to turn to consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove an item from consent? Okay, so I'm going to move that we approve the consent calendar as presented in your packet. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Whalen. Madam Secretary, please call the room.
For the adoption of the consent calendar, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Ms. Epstein.
Yes, with the exception of item A, from which I abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Rossman.
Yes.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So Vice President Kramer is advocating for me to be referred to as Dr. Sinai. That's, that is my father for whether, whatever that's word. So, so we're going to turn to, we're going to turn to page 20 of your packet, which is a public hearing and adoption of ordinance, Chapter 126 Sewers, sanitary sewer rental rate for 2024. So I'm going to start by opening the public hearing, and this is the opportunity you have to comment on the sanitary sewer rate if you wish. Does anyone in the room wish to comment on this ordinance? Does anyone online wish to comment on this ordinance?
Does not appear so.
Nope. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to move that we adopt an ordinance enacted pursuant to the code of Township of Lower Merion, Chapter 126 Sewers, fixing the amount of the annual sanitary sewer rental fee and establishing the amount of $4.51 as the charge to each property connected to the Township's sanitary sewer system for each 1,000 gallons of water consumed, and fixing the amount of the annual sanitary sewer rental fee for each property directly connected to the City of Philadelphia sanitary sewer system as that amount charged by the City of Philadelphia for such service. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held April 17, 2024, and duly advertised in the May 5, 2024 edition of the Main Line Times in Suburban. Thank you, Vice President Kramer, for that second. Any questions for staff or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary.
For the adoption of ordinance 4291, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Aye.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Ms. Epstein.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Rossman.
Yes.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
We now turn to page 23 of your packet, which is the adoption of ordinance, Chapter 5 Administrative Code in Chapter 133 Streets and Sidewalks, Amendments Related to CIP Responsibility, Permits and Violations. And I'll move that we adopt an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of Lower Merion, Chapter 5 Administrative Code, Article 10 Finance and Budget, Section 554 Capital Programs, to reassign responsibility for the Township's capital improvement program in Chapter 133 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 1 Encroachments and Obstructions, Article 2 Snow and Ice Removal, Article 3 Right-of-Way Occupancy, Excavation and Use, and Article 4 Defective Sidewalks and Curbs, to amend regulations related to the issuance of certain permits and enforcement violations, enforcement of violations. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held April 17, 2024, and duly advertised the May 5, 2024 edition of the Main Line Times in Suburban. Do I have a second? Vice President Kramer, thank you. Any questions for staff on this? Comments? Okay, Madam Secretary.
For the adoption of ordinance 4292, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Aye.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Ms. Epstein.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Rossman.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
We now turn to page 29 of your packet. There have been adoption of ordinance, Chapter 145 Vehicles and Traffic, Hagerford Road and Writers Mill Road Stop Sign and One Way Regulations, and I'll move that we adopt an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of Lower Merion, Chapter 145 thereof, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 15 Schedules, Section 145106, Schedule 6 Intersections Restricted as Through Turns and Through Traffic, by prohibiting entry on the left side of the channelized island of Hagerford Road and amending Schedules 145108, Schedule 8 Stop Intersections, by rescinding the two-way stop intersection at Hagerford Road and Writers Mill Road and establishing a four-way stop intersection. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners held May 1, 2024, and duly advertised in the May 3, 2024 edition of the Times Herald, and hopefully will stop a whole bunch of accidents from happening. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bernheim. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Bernheim.
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to take a second because sitting here, Pastor Nak, thank him and Sergeant Colfash for a lot of their, you know, prompt work in order to, you know, finally get something that is necessary and, as you just said, President Sinai, to hopefully prevent some accidents at that intersection.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Secretary.
For the adoption of ordinance 4293, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Ms. Epstein.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Rossman.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Okay, we do have some new business. I start by recognizing Commissioner Zell.
Thank you, President Sinai. Last week, Commissioner Rossman and I, joined by our acting superintendent, Jean Pastor Nak and other members of the Police Command Staff, were at the luncheon of the coannas of the main line in which they recognized LMPD Police Officer Michael Pleasance as the Officer of the Year in 2023. Michael is serving in his 18th year with LMPD. He's a veteran field training officer, a platoon investigator. Of the 92 investigations assigned to him last year, he brought criminal prosecutions for 42 of them, including thefts, assaults, burglaries, assaults on police, DUI, fraud, arson, and firearms violations. Mike is also a member of the District Attorney's Narcotics Enforcement Task Force and the Gun Violence Reduction Task Force, identifying firearm violations and ghost guns. Mike also worked in our Special Investigations Unit, which does undercover work and surveillance. He successfully developed a relationship with an informant, identified and arrested a drug trafficker, leading to the seizure of a large amount of illegal drugs and a firearm. He assisted in other drug investigations, which has resulted in the seizure of several kilos of cocaine, one arrest, and more are pending. Mike has also been awarded Officer of the Quarter and multiple commendations, including heroism, and his father, Dennis, who was in attendance at the lunch last week, worked in our IT department for 30 years. So because of his outstanding work and accomplishments, Officer Michael Pleasance of LMPD was selected by his peers to be the LMPD 2023 Officer of the Year. It was a very impressive coannas of the main line for each and every year, recognizing an Officer of the Year from LMPD. Thank you, President Sinai.
Thank you, Commissioner Zell, and I think that officer deserves a round of applause certainly by us. We do have some more new business. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Courtney.
Thank you, President Sinai. I want to expand on the announcement you made earlier regarding the Go for the Green Awards. Every year, the Environmental Advisory Councils and the Shade Tree Commissions of Lower Merion and Narburg get together to recognize significant contributions to environmental quality, natural resources, and sustainability made to our two municipalities and the world at large by local residences, residents, businesses, and institutions. The aim of this is to raise awareness of environmental values and of the actions each of us can take as stewards of our natural resources and as exponents of the social ethic that the actions we take today for our benefit should be taken with the cognizance of their impact on future generations. I won't be spoiling any surprises by saying who the award recipients are. The Joe Manco Lifetime Achievement Award is going to Jesse Lidle, founder of the Narburg EAC and Vice President and Chief of Staff of Havreford College. The Mackey San Miguel Paulson Sustainability Award is going to Sudie Herdman of Ballackinwood. We're recognizing the Gladman Free Library, as well as some Shortridge Park volunteers, Celia and James Mamory, Rob Cooper, Stacy Hirsch, Dan Mercer. Mother Compost will be receiving recognition as a commercial enterprise. Derek Wu of Ardmore for Friends of Penns Woods. Hillary Johnson of Gladman, and Rob McGreevy of Narburg will also be receiving awards. In addition to those awards, there'll be some remarks by John Durnbach, Emeritus Professor of Law and founding director of the Environmental Law and Sustainability Center of the Widener Commonwealth School of Law. He's a nationally recognized author on sustainable development, climate change, and environmental law. The Go for the Green Awards will take place Tuesday, May 21, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. at the Appleford Estate, and I hope we can all make.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Courtney. Is there any other new business to come before the board? Seeing none, this meeting is hereby adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.